Okay, I will call to order the August 11th meeting of the Stoughton Select Board. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting is being recorded by Stoughton Media Access Corporation and being broadcast live, and it will be available for rebroadcast. It's being broadcast through Google Meets. So with that, I would like to ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McRisky, would you be so kind as to show your flag if you have it available?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Mr. McRisky. Quickly do a roll call of board members, just to confirm that everyone is here. Ms. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Kaby?
Mute, but I'm here.
Mr. Oregan?
Here.
And Mr. McRisky?
Here.
And I am here. All right, first item on the agenda is citizens' requests. I see a number of people have called in. If you'd like to make a comment under citizens' requests, please unmute yourself and I will recognize you. Seeing anyone unmuting. All right, hearing no citizens' requests, we'll move on to select board comments. Ms. Roberts, any comments?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Mr. Kaby?
Just a reminder, especially, so the reminder is, election that we have on the state side, or there's a number of seats that people are running for in primaries. Please exercise your right. It's a very powerful tool that we all have, the citizens. If you plan to vote by mail, now's the time to start working through the paperwork to get your ballot sent to you and then sent back in time. If you plan to go in person, you know, obviously, please exercise caution. Be safe, everyone, and that's it. But just as, you know, the more that I've been involved in government, the more powerful, the more I've realized, the longer I've been in government, the more I've realized how extraordinary democracy is, how extraordinary the power to vote is. And, you know, I kind of knew it, you heard it a lot, but it's really there. It's really, really powerful. So if you believe in us as a nation, show it by sharing your ideas and casting your ballot. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. Mr. Oregan, any comments? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Good evening. I would just like to make sure the community is aware that the Stoughton Library is, has an ongoing program on Stoughton Reads together for the book "Just Mercy" by Bryan Stevenson. This is an outgrowth of the social and racial justice movement that I think as a community, we could all do well to become involved with. This is a townwide book read. There's an effort to have the book read extend into the student population in the school. The program begins this week on August 13th at 7:00 with former Massachusetts Corrections Education Administrator Carl Bowen. He's going to address these topics that flow from "Just Mercy." What are the demographics of the prison population in Massachusetts? What are prison schools like? What are the issues of juveniles in the adult criminal justice system? And particularly on the concept of hope, which is focused in Chapter 11 of the "Just Mercy" book, and how important is the concept of hope for making progress, particularly with redemption? And there'll be a question and answer period to follow. If people are interested in it, it's a video online. The link is available on the library webpage, right on the front page when you join in. For the entire Stoughton Reads Together program on the community book read "Just Mercy", on the front page of the library website, you can see the links. There's also, for the individual book reading groups, there's facilitator training that's being set up. So I would urge anyone, and many people have expressed interest in participating. If you're not aware, or if you'd like to become aware and participate in the program, go on to the library website, you'll see the links there. If you're not able to find those links, give a call to the library. Your calls will be answered and anything and every, if people would like to do to participate, I'm sure they can find a way so that we can begin the work of understanding where we are and where we need to go together as a community, in part through this program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Oregan. Mr. McRisky, any comments?
Yes, I would just like to recognize the passing of Carl Fisher, who was the Stoughton Police Department dispatcher and supervisor. He had been with Stoughton since 2017 and lost a year-long battle with cancer at the young age of 59. Before he came to Stoughton, he was with the town of Avon for 25 years. And I've been told by many people that he was really pivotal in a lot of the progress we made in the dispatch department over the past years as we've changed and it's grown and taken on the additional calls of the fire department and so forth. So I would like to, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Stoughton, offer our condolences to the family of dispatch supervisor Carl Fisher and to let him know and their family that the thoughts and prayers of the Board of Selectmen and the people of Stoughton are with them at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McRisky. I just have one brief comment and maybe one item for future discussion or just a reminder to the board. So first, myself and select person Roberts were able to participate in NA PC's Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan Remap webinar, informational webinar. Also, that program is providing, is partnering with the Federal Reserve Bank and NA PC, which is our regional planning agency, as well as a nonprofit called GARE to help municipalities implement a program looking at basically racial equity in their communities. So we were able to attend that webinar and hopefully we'll have a presentation for the board next week regarding that grant and the potential application to submit. Just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. You can go on that NA PC website to find out more information if you're interested in learning more on that. And the second point I wanted to make before we go into the public hearings later today, you know, this was brought to my attention, I think Mr. McRisky's brought this up to the board before, and was that Ms. Roberts, new on the board. You know, this group in the past voted to basically take turns reviewing these applications. And we don't quite have an onboarding process for new select board members, per se. So I think just a reminder that the purpose of reviewing these applications is so that each member of the board doesn't have to do sort of the in-depth reading of the 100-plus-page application, but basically make sure that everything's included and has been put together by staff and the appropriate departments and that we've received all of the recommendations from staff and all the required documents prior to the application making it to the board. So that does not mean that board members should be the ones out doing, you know, the inspections of the business or making the phone calls with the applicants and things of that nature, but rather just to make sure that all of the sort of administrative work was done in preparation for the public hearing so that when the applicant comes to us, it's fully vetted and ready to, ready to go, including, you know, so that we can ask questions and so on and so forth. So Ms. Roberts, I'll probably be helping explain this a little more in detail when our rotation cycle comes around. But if the board's interested in revisiting this policy that we have, sort of rotating, happy to entertain that if anybody wants to talk about it at a future meeting. And maybe find an alternative way to do this. I understand in the past, sometimes the vice chair was the sort of reader of the applications and that gave that individual an opportunity to really learn about the process before maybe becoming chair themselves. So there's definitely different ways to do it and I'm open to suggestions from the board. So if we want to review that at a future meeting, happy to add it to the agenda to talk about it in the future. So for now, I think we're still on our cyclical process that we set up. But I can certainly add that to a future agenda if we want to chat about it further as a group and figure out if this system works, if there's a better way to do it moving forward. Yes, go ahead, Debra.
Yes, I would agree, that would be very helpful to talk about the process, the review process, the due diligence that we are responsible for, and how the rotation and the assignments occur, and et cetera, et cetera. So I would appreciate it being an agenda item on a future meeting. Thank you.
Great. All right, that's all I had. So moving on to item four, which is town manager's comments.
Just quickly, we are still continuing with the survey for the downtown. We have well over 600 respondents, which is huge. We have a few more days for this to happen. I believe the town planner's goal is over 750 and we are on track for that. We've got 50 more in just the past couple of days. So we encourage people to go to the website, it was on my Facebook page, we'll just keep reposting it. But we really want your input on some thoughts about how downtown should look. Also, following up on that, we officially received the application from the Malcolm Parsons developer today, or yesterday, over the weekend, actually, I got notice of that. So that will be moving forward onto the planning board. So we are extremely excited that the formal application is actually in our hands. And here we go, so that's a great thing. And just an announcement from Mike Puzara, two brothers-in-law passed away. They were both very prominent Stoughton residents. Mr. Fred Diamond, a 99-year-old WWII vet who was seriously wounded in Italy and spent many, many months recovering in hospitals. He was involved in many civic groups in town and was a life member of the VFW, the American Legion, and the disabled American veterans. And Charlie Wade, his brother-in-law, was 90 and was a Korean War veteran. His military service caused him to completely lose his hearing. He was an active life member in the American Legion and the VFW and involved in many community events. And whenever he spoke, he always ended with "all gave some, some gave all." And to those gentlemen, both, they leave behind family and we would like to thank them for their service. On behalf of the town, I would like to thank them for their service and their sacrifice. Both were wounded soldiers and still came home and served their community with pride and dignity. So on behalf of the people of Stoughton, I would like to pass along a thank you and our condolences to their family for the loss of these two great men. Thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. All right, so we're slightly ahead of schedule. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30. We do have a couple of items we can take out of order. So why don't we skip ahead to our consent agenda? We have a few items on that. Payroll and bill warrants and any other documents to come before the meeting. One-day all alcohol license application for J&amp;G Hillside Grill, 1137 Park Street, August 15th to September 15th, 2020. Water connection application for Umberta and Fortuna, 13th Station Street. The jury agency grant agreement with the Housing Authority, to release that from executive session. It's a public document. Approve the state primary warrant and approve open session minutes of July 21st and July 28th, 2020. Would anybody like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent, sorry, consent agenda.
Second.
Right, motion made by Mr. Kaby, seconded by Mr. McRisky. On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McRisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is Pam McCarthy with us yet? She has.
I'm here, Christine, I am here. Hi.
Welcome. Would you like to give us an update on the micro enterprise assistance program, our item number nine?
Yeah, we can do that. So a couple of months ago, I reprogrammed $100,000 of the storefront improvement CDBG money to be used for our micro enterprise assistance grants. And that's for businesses that have five or fewer employees, including the owner. I can provide grants up to $10,000 for businesses that were adversely affected by COVID-19 to fund operating expenses, things like rent, utilities, payroll. Right now, I'm working with 15 different businesses. I know of about a half a dozen others that are interested. I've been able to award six grants in the last couple of weeks totaling $47,265. There are 10 other applications right now that are just in various stages of review and document intake. But I wanted to let businesses know that if they're interested, they should take a look at the guidelines on the website and also the application that's available there. You can either find that on the main town webpage under Town News. It says, "Micro Enterprise Grants." Or you can look at the economic development website to find that information. People that don't have a computer or internet access, they can call me or email me. I'm an extension 9265 or pamcarthy@stoughton-me.gov. And this money is going to run out in the next couple of weeks. But the good thing is that I got the grant for the additional $400,000. So I'll be able to help another 50 to 60 businesses with this type of grant. I got the contract from the state yesterday that I'll be asking Christine to sign in the next couple of days. And I'm just, I wanted to let businesses know that even if they got other assistance from things like the Paycheck Protection Program or unemployment assistance or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, you're still eligible to apply for this assistance. I just have to have you document the fact that you're not going to use this money for something that you used the other funds for, that you still have a need and you'll be using this money for something else that you still need. So I just wanted to get, start getting the word out that the businesses should contact me if you want this assistance. And it's a grant, it's not a loan, so it's not something that has to get paid back. Did anybody have any questions about that?
Do any members of the board have questions for Ms. McCarthy? I just had one follow-up. Can the six grants that you gave, what were sort of the ranges for the businesses on those?
Actually, it's nice because people were very honest about their needs. They knew they could ask for up to $10,000, but they ranged from $3,800 up to $10,000 with a lot of different amounts in between. So they're really just asking for what they need and they're leaving funds for other businesses there. I mean, I can tell you who the businesses are too because people have agreed to let this be public. But the awards have already gone out to Peppercorn's, David Beez Barbershop, Nagoya Sushi, The Paris Company, DMA by Dominique Mitchell, and Maximus Antiques. So those are the first recipients. And we're hoping to be able to get a lot more businesses that we can help.
That's great. And is there a requirement with this funding where they, you know, have to maintain a certain number of jobs or employ additional people through?
So this is a grant that's not based on job creation. It's based on, it's available to people that qualify as low-to-moderate income individuals at the personal level. So what I'm doing is, I'm going to be asking them to report on their progress. So about, probably about six months, I mean, six weeks after they get the money, I'll be checking in with them. And they all know that there's the possibility that I'll ask them for documentation to show that the funds are being used for what they had requested money for. So there is going to be a reporting process because it is money from the federal government. It's managed through DHDD. And we always want to be able to show that the town is making good use of these funds and that we can prove where everything went. It's very transparent.
Yeah, that's great. I know there's a little bit burdensome on the reporting requirements.
Yeah, lots of paperwork.
But that's great that we can hopefully get that out to even more businesses that are funding, the additional funding that was awarded. Any additional comments from members of the board? Questions for Ms. McCarthy? We do still have a little bit of time here. I don't know if we want to pick up any other items. Just have a feeling that some of them might take a little longer than five minutes.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Is the applicant for 820 Washington Street here?
Yes, I'm here. This is James Downey.
Hi, James, welcome.
Thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll just take a brief break until 7:30 and then we can call the public hearing and order just, in the event, any members of the public wanting to attend at this time.
Sure.
All right, it is now 7:30, so I'll ask members of the board to return to the meeting. We can begin item number five, which is the public hearing for the lodging license application for 820 Washington Street, which is the Fieldbrook House. Sir, you motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion to open the public hearing. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McRisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. So this application, actually, this came before our usual rotation, so to speak, to Mr. McRisky and we actually discussed it. There are a number of outstanding questions that we're waiting to have answered from staff. So I will allow the applicant to sort of give us an overview of this request. The biggest question that we had looking at this was ownership of the property. So I'm sure that the board may have received in the materials a, in addition, all extension on the purchase and sale agreement. I currently understand that the applicant does not own the property. And from what we understand, the purchase and sale agreement being finalized is contingent upon the lodging license being awarded. So I have a little bit of a catch-22 here in terms of an applicant who isn't a property owner submitting the application and unable to become the property owner without this application being approved. So, Mr. Downey, I understand you're on the call. If you'd like to just give us an overview of your application and sort of explain the situation, please?
Sure. Thank you. Can everyone, is, am I audible for everyone? Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for giving me your time and attention this evening. My name is James Downey. I come here as a manager of Station Lodging LLC. We're in the process- We're in the process of acquiring the property at 820 Washington Street. And as part of the transfer, as as Ms. Howe alluded to, is a bit of a chicken and the egg. We're trying to maybe get the license at the same time as we close or in right in advance of closing on this property. A little background for for everyone on the property. The property is 820 Washington Street is a 29 unit rooming house. Last September, it suffered some fire damage. And as of now, the property is is fully vacant and really in need of a complete renovation of the building interior. Much of the drywall has been removed, the bath, the kitchen, electrical fixtures all need replacement. So what we're trying to do is is get the license. We would acquire the property in a short order after obtaining the license and then look to renovate the property over the next seven to nine months. And, you know, really look to reopen the property, you know, late spring, early summer next year or sometime in that timeframe and be able to provide fair-priced housing to 29 residents of Stoughton. And that's why we're coming to the board in request of this license.
And, Mr. Downey, why is it that the PNS is contingent upon the license being approved?
Well, I guess we we probably, for us, the risk was we didn't know if we would be in a position to obtain a license and not really understanding the process. So we wanted the license in place or preferred it in place in advance of closing. And that was sort of our rationale and goal. Desiring not to close and own a piece of property and maybe do start doing renovation and construction and find out for whatever reasons down the line, we won't be we won't be able to obtain a license. So that was more, it was a chicken and the egg thing. It was a risk issue and we felt maybe we can get the license in advance.
Okay, so the closing of the property is not necessarily held up by not issuing the license. It's more that you want the assurance that a license would be issued prior to investing in the construction and renovation and so on.
Well, the latter part is true. We would like to have the license before we advance, you know, and invest significantly in the property. And thus there is a clause in our purchase and sale that says, you know, there is an open condition of we close on this property after we obtain a license. If that makes sense.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Regan.
I I just think as as a basic matter, it is not unusual for an applicant with a purchase and sale agreement who has not yet taken title, big zoning or other relief or other kinds of permitting. Closing is is based on the condition that prior to the closing, those licenses of permits be granted. And all other things being equal, like I think in this instance, one option the board would have would be to approve the license application and direct that the license can issue only after the applicant demonstrates that it has taken and recorded the title at the registry of deeds. I imagine that would satisfy the operation of the purchase and sale agreement and also the interest of the town in not having licenses issued or permits issued on projects and properties. No address to exercise to that. That's something we can deal with within when we get to the approval, I believe.
Okay. Great. Regan. Just going through our normal sort of recommendations, our input from the town staff. The the fire, I'm not sure, Mr. Downey, if you received this information from the staff as well. The treasurer collector indicated no issues, no outstanding taxes. The fire department had no objections. This they they understand that the building's under remodel and so in the event, you know, the new fire protection system being installed or renovations, they will need to do a final inspection prior to any occupancy. Obviously. Just see here. The police department had objections as well. Similar, building department, no objections. And the building inspector indicated that you're aware of what needs to be done prior to getting the occupancy as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky.
Yes, I I had gone through the application as well and I did. I did speak with you regarding my concerns. I don't recall and I have no problem supporting the the process that Mr. Regan mentioned of holding these licenses because I, as I spoke with you, had some concerns as to how we can issue somebody licenses for a piece of property they don't own. So if we hold those in abeyance, I cannot see how we could issue them until the petitioner shows that he has legal right to the property. It's his and we could do it. I wouldn't have any problem at all, Mr. Regan, on his thought if we want to put that into a a motion because the application, other than that, seems to be in order. It's completed. Everybody has checked off on it. And it seems that if the only thing that's different is he doesn't own the property right now. If he owned the property, everything would be would be in accordance of the process to issue the the lodging permit. So I don't have a problem at all of us approving this and it gets held in abeyance. But again, it would only be issued after the closing and and the petitioner shows that it is is his property. So Mr. Regan, if that would be your motion, I would second that.
I would just hold off on that until we hear from all the members of the board, please, and the public. Mr. Roberts, any any comments or questions for the applicant?
No, I have. He answered all the question I had regarding the use of the property and the ownership. So no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Kavy, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have just just one question. When you so let's just, you know, play a little bit of a scenario, what if, right? So everything goes through. You you hold on the property, you get the license, but you still have a building that is is damaged, right? You mentioned is not currently, sorry, like a motorcycle going by, I don't know if you can hear that. But but your property is currently damaged, needs repairs. Do you have a high a high-level timeline of when you expect to have that work completed?
Well, we have a tentative construction schedule of about seven months.
Okay.
So that takes, you know, and and assuming we've got a still get some engineering worked on, you know, and building permits. So we're probably, you know, we're we're not doing much physical construction presumably for for a month or two, probably at the earliest. So that timeline puts us out to, you know, I'd say probably mid to late spring is probably, you know, probably if things work out well.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan, any final questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will entertain comments or questions from members of the public. If you would like to speak on this, please unmute yourself and I will recognize you.
I believe I'm unmuted.
Yep, that's correct. And I'm running an O six. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I really think think that town council and the prospective owners can figure out a way to do this legally. I think this kind of housing is vital. When I was teaching, some of my students actually lived in lodging houses with a single parent. This kind of housing is really necessary for low-income workers. I know that some of the cab drivers that drive for the company that I use live in lodging houses here in Stoughton. It's safe or it will be after the renovations. It's going to be very safe, clean housing for folks who can't afford anything else. We know that after the COVID crisis is over, there's going to be a lot of evictions. There'll be a real necessity for this kind of housing for people who in the past never would have dreamed that they'd live in a lodging house. But the lodging house is kind of between their apartment and their car as far as a a place to live. So I applaud the prospective new owners for the renovations they're going to make, especially putting in a fire suppression system. And I hope that this can be done as soon as possible and the town council can find a way for you folks to legally grant these folks the license. Because as I said, this kind of housing is just vital and it's going to get more vital as the pandemic goes on and fewer and fewer people can afford apartment rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment or question? Hearing none. Any additional comments or questions from members of the board? Well, Matt, is there a motion regarding the lodging license for 820 Washington Street?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the proviso that the license is not to issue until the applicant has delivered to the selectman's office or board's office a certified copy of the deed taking title to the property. And the town council has confirmed that the applicant has title to the property.
Second.
On the motion made by Mr. Regan and seconded by Mr. McChrisky, any discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Downey. We'll be in in touch with how to obtain that and any information we need.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Our next hearing is for applications for an all-alcohol license, common victualers license and entertainment license at the Stoughton. Brew's located at 28 Porter Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for the House of Brew's applications?
So made.
Made. Open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, second.
On the motion to open the hearing, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right. Is the applicant on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hello, welcome. Please introduce yourselves.
Thank you. I'm a McGregor Morgan owner and this is Stephen Dray, manager.
All right, thank you. So I was charged with reviewing this application. Everything is is in order. I just had a few kind of outstanding comments or questions just to run by you regarding some input from staff. So the, as as you may have heard on the previous hearing, if you're on the line, we typically have the department's review aspects of this and provide input on the application. So we're taking over the existing location at 28 Porter Street. First item recommendation from the the town staff was the police department was related to the occupancy. This might have actually been the Board of Health. So I submitted an occupancy increase from 60, I believe, to 100. I'm not sure if this was discussed with any town staff. This is sounding like something the staff articulated to you regarding occupancy of the space. Mr. Morgan?
Sure, yeah. So my understanding was the occupancy was 60 for inside and then 40 for the patio. So the total being 100, but I think the occupancy for the building is correct at 60.
Okay.
So we're now looking to increase that.
Great. And then the the fire department indicated that the hood and the ancil system and the lockbox keys would have to be updated and inspected once that is completed. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And then on the entertainment license, the police department had requested that the entertainment remain sort of more consistent with the previous owner. So just wanted to confirm that you were aware of that and to see if your application matched that previous entertainment license.
Yes, that won't be a problem. We plan on probably doing a little bit less than before, so it'll be about the same or less.
And I did notice, I believe, let me just find where it is, the the common victualers license. The hours open to close were listed as 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Is that accurate? Or is that supposed to be 1:00 a.m.?
That's supposed to be 1:00 a.m.
All right, I'll just make sure we amend that to 1:00 a.m. I figured out you're having entertainment till 1:00 a.m. I want it to be open as late, so I will just make a note to amend the common victualers application to 1:00 a.m. Is there any other information you'd like to provide the board regarding the application? Maybe just an overview of of plans and and timeline?
Thank you for having us an opportunity to speak. No, so right now pending approval, we are in the process of doing some kind of small, just clean-up things. We're very happy to be here in Antona-Stoughton and, you know, we've been very well supported so far from everyone we've spoken to. Folks are excited to see another business remain in Stoughton instead of closing, so I'm happy to come in and help out as much as I can. We do have a a strong team that we've put together to, you know, keep things going here. You know, outside of that, you know, just thank you for your consideration, but we're very excited to open amidst COVID and everything else and hopefully as restrictions lift, we'll be able to utilize more of the space.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll turn it to members of the board for any questions. Ms. Roberts, any questions for the applicants? You're you're on mute, Ms. Roberts.
Are you? Thank you so much. Are you planning to have the same type of format as the previous owner, you know, some some entertainment like three-person type of band or a single-person band, the same type of cuisine? Can you talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure. You want to touch on the food?
Yeah, so for the food, we're definitely going in a different direction. We're focusing on local ingredients throughout all of New England. We're getting all of our chicken and beef locally, all of our produce from Langwater Farm right up the street. So it's putting a local flair on traditional tavern food. We're going to have your your wings and your nachos and your steak and everything's going to be done with house-infused dressings and sauces that are mixed with the beer and and just things done in a in a more elevated fashion than your traditional tavern food. So that's the kind of the direction the food is going in. We're doing everything as locally as possible, getting all of the soda locally, all of the beverages as close to home as we can, really kind of give it that local flair and use as many farm-fresh ingredients as possible. So lots of great breweries around our area, so that part of it is easy. Now we're just looking and finalizing different vendors that we're using for the food. As far as the entertainment goes, you know, especially at first with all of the restrictions, we're going to hold off on any events and for live music. However, down the line, we do plan on doing select events once restrictions are lifted and we're able to do some live music and some bands that used to be here and and just different different musical acts. just different, uh, different musical acts and things like that. But overall, we're keeping the, the area set up to do live music still, but we'll probably be holding off for at least a couple of months, depending on restrictions and all of that, which we will be closely paying attention to.
Thank you. Sounds really good. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Looking forward.
Uh, Mr. Kavy, any, any questions for the applicants?
Not so much questions. I, I actually just want to, uh, to thank you for taking this on. I know it's a difficult time to be, uh, entering this kind of business, but the, the establishment, I don't know if you guys have been there in the past, uh, but it was, you know, it's beloved, it's a wonderful establishment, and, uh, and I am looking forward to, to what you guys have to show, what you, what you have to offer. So, um, you know, I just want to wish you all the luck in the world. I know it's going to be difficult.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We certainly have a great relationship with prior owners, and they've been very, very helpful in, in helping us transition over here, and we look forward to having them and certainly everyone, uh, on this call in and at Stoughton in for, uh, for a good time very soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Oregan, any questions for the applicants?
Uh, well, thank you. I'd start by saying everything he just said. And then just, I just want to verify on the alcohol license, you're seeking one of the special downtown alcohol licenses, right?
That is correct, yes.
Good. Thank you. Nothing else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. McCrisky, any questions for the applicants?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, no questions, uh, just a comment. It's, it's a, it's a pleasure to see McGregor, uh, taking on another project in town. And, uh, you know, what he did in his, his other business, uh, you know, cleaned up new signage, whole different look, adding to downtown. It's a pleasure, McGregor, to have you taking on another project. I'm excited personally to see the, the brewhouse stay open. The House of Brews, it's, uh, it's been a great location, a lot of good people, good owners, and you're taking it over, and I can't wait to see what you're going to do. So I'm excited. Good luck, and if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Appreciate it.
All right, and I did just have one other, um, or sort of question or comment. We received an update from the, the collector's office, so I think you're aware of the outstanding tax issues, and so if the ownership and the name of the property stays within the House of Brews, that does need to be squared up, um, you know, by the new owners. So I'm not sure if you received the latest update from the collector's office, but let's see here if I can pull it up. Apologize. So there's a small balance, um, personal property taxes and a remaining outstanding bill, which will need to be sort of reconciled with the previous owner. I'm not sure if you've had communication regarding that, but if it's going to maintain the same name as House of Brews, they indicated it does need to be paid out, so.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Howe, if I may speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I think the town manager can make you more aware of the situation. Your personal tax collection system has failed for the last year and a half with payments that we've sent in from our bank. We've now overpaid you, we've paid penalties, we've paid taxes because your P.O. box reference system in Medford that receives them has not processed our payments online. The town manager has the records that I've emailed to her six months ago and again yesterday, and today I went down after I was given information what happened to be paid, and we've now overpaid just to get this resolved so this happens. So let's not say we owe taxes, please. Everything's been paid.
All right. On the records, there's an outstanding balance that needs to be.
Well, that's, that's.
That's what I'll phrase it.
I don't like seeing our name put out there in that light, so.
I, I will confirm that, that all has been resolved, and there was a double payment, and in the end, it ended up being a matter of a twelve-dollar fee and just craziness, and so I apologize to Mr. Faye that this happened.
Of which, of which we've now paid two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
Yes, and, and this happened last year, there was an issue as well for Mr. Faye, there was no fault of his own, so unfortunately, he, he has battled twice with us and with software issues, and, um, it's been very unfortunate. But all is resolved, and, and Mr. Faye certainly is a member in good standing in this community.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Grim. Sounds like that's no longer an issue. And the only other note, I understand that it's McGregor Enterprises LLC that is the applicant doing business as Stoughton House of Brews, but want to confirm that all the licenses are awarded to the LLC applying. So if there's any, any name on the application, just confirm that those are, are issued to the correct entity with the DBA as, as Stoughton House of Brews, just so for our record-keeping purposes, everything is, uh, in line, so. Just wanted to make sure that that's noted on the applications. If there are no other questions from members of the board, I will allow, turn it over to.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have one follow-up on the tax issue. I, uh, I'm concerned about what I heard from Mr. Faye. I looked through this application when we got it, and then I looked through it again tonight before the meeting. I may have missed it, but I don't see anything that would indicate this was caught before the materials were sent to us. So I wonder if the manager can include in your next manager's report to us an explanation, more detailed than there was a mistake in the collector's office, but an explanation of where the mistake occurred, how the mistake was allowed to occur twice, and what steps are being taken in the department so that this does not happen again, and also, to the extent you're able to figure it out, how many other taxpayers in the position that this individual was placed in where materials come to the board for, for approval, and it is apparent that the information we're receiving is inaccurate, and in a public setting, a taxpayer who has good standing in the community, uh, is, is allowed to appear who owe taxes when he doesn't. I think there's a simple, there's a simple fix, which is this doesn't happen again, but I'd like to have a short explanation of how this happened twice, and why it's, and how it's not going to happen again. If, if you can do that, I'd appreciate it.
Dr. Grim is nodding, so I, I imagine that will be.
Yes.
Good to, thank you. So no additional comments or questions from members of the board? I will, uh, open it up to public comments. If a member of the public would like to make comments or ask a question of the applicant, please unmute. I will recognize you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair? Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. First, I have, I guess, two questions. Have the petitioners held, um, an alcoholic or common dick license in the past anywhere else?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, um, they have to go through the safe serve, serve process and everything?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, when they are able to have entertainment, are they planning on having any entertainment on the patio? Or will it just be inside the building?
Would the applicant like to respond?
Uh, sure. I, at this point, I, and I can ask Leo just to clarify what existed before as far as entertainment goes. I think during the summer, there might have been some light entertainment on the patio with the nice weather, but I'm not sure if that was as commonplace, but entertainment primarily, my opinion, would be inside. Maybe if there was an event focused around, um, the outdoors, then we would entertain, move an entertainment outside.
Certainly, we've talked a little bit about doing some different things once restrictions are lifted as far as doing brewery tap takeovers and from their surrounding community, inviting different musicians and artists from that community, wherever the brewery is, to come in. And again, if it's during the spring or summer and we could do it outside, then that's not something we want to shut the door on. Right now, we're just really focused on making sure that our Monday to Friday lunch and dinner service are hitting all their marks, and, uh, once more things get lifted and we're able to comfortably do events and live music, that we do that right as well.
Um, Madam Chair, my concern is that's an extremely congested area, and I know that the, um, housing closest to this building, um, to the House of Brews behind it, um, is predominantly seniors. So, um, how much entertaining outside the phase did, I never got a complaint about it, but I should think that the petition should be aware that this is a congested area with multi-story buildings extremely close.
Completely, completely understand that, and certainly I've worked in many restaurants in my day where we have close neighbors and we do events and outside. We certainly don't plan on making, uh, making any loud, uh, ruckus late at night in any way, so, um, I certainly will be keeping that in mind. It is a very congested area with all of the apartment buildings and everything, but certainly we would have that in our, uh, in our minds throughout any planning of any of this.
Thank you. And then my final, uh, isn't a question, it's a comment. I've been a frequent denizen of House of Brews. I intend to continue. While I am not a drinker of alcohol, I always liked the friendly atmosphere and enjoyed the food. It sounds like the food is going to be even better, so I really do look forward to, um, when you open your doors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Madam Chair.
Yep, if you just told, I'll, I'll go down the list of those who are unmuted and can allow you to make public comment. Next on my list is Mr. Faye.
Uh, yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, you know, Sam and I really struggled with moving on from, you know, the baby we created, and we went through a process of talking to some people about, about purchasing it, and we, we kind of felt it was more an interview process, and McGregor came in, and he brought Stephen in, and we had a conversation, we went through some stuff, and we really feel like their hearts are in the right place. Um, we felt good enough about it because we want to be able to go down there. You know, we, things changed in our lives that we have to be able to move on, and we can't be tied there anymore. So, um, we've got a great opportunity to now have some experienced people. Stephen, he's been in the business, and yes, he's served safe, serve, safe certified, he's been through tip certification, he's been through all that in his previous jobs. That's one of the things we asked him. So McGregor is bringing him in to help him through that mode. Um, and, and, and it's really kind of an exciting time as far as the music outside. If you don't approve them for the music outside, there goes the festivals and the fundraisers and the, the charity things that we were able to do over the years, and Sam and I have, you know, we want to work with them to continue to do that stuff in the community and see this stuff go forward. So, um, you guys have given us a lot of trust over the years, and through speaking to them and hearing what their goals and what, what they want to do into the short future, I, I think, um, trust them, because I think they will bring it to you. That's it.
Thank you. Next, someone, Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Zemanian, Five Lo Avenue. Uh, just wanted to make a quick comment. Leo, thank you and your wife, Sam, for your service to the community over the years. I've been a frequenter of the House of Brews both the morning and the evening. Always enjoyed myself, great conversations with, with the Fae's. God, I'm going to miss you, Leo. You know, I'm going to miss your face up behind the bar, but, uh, I thank you for all that you've done, and I, I know that you'll be a continued active member of our community, and I welcome McGregor and Stephen, and I look forward to frequenting the House of Brews for much, much more time with any luck. So thank you for, for taking this on from the Fae's, and, and again, Leo, God bless you, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Any additional questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing none. Entertain a motion from the board on the application?
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
We should do each license individually?
Yeah.
So, Mr. McCrisky, was that a motion on the all-alcohol license for Morgan Enterprises LLC doing business as Stoughton House of Brews at 28 Porter Street?
We'll start that, yes, Madam Chair.
And I'll second that.
All right. On the motion made and seconded, any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So motion to approve the all-alcohol license passes. Uh, the next motion would be for the common victuaries license at, for Morgan Enterprises LLC doing business as Stoughton House of Brews at 28 Porter Street.
A move to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Last, uh, license for an entertainment license, again, Morgan Enterprises LLC doing business as Stoughton House of Brews at 28 Porter Street.
Madam Chair, a question, is this, is this the application where the time was, needs to be corrected to one AM?
It was actually on the common victuaries license.
Then, um, I confuse them, but the, uh, I'd like to move to reconsider that the application be approved for eight AM to one PM on the common victory license.
On the motion to reconsider?
Sorry about that, I, I had them inverted on.
Edited it as well, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion to reconsider to approve the CV for the amended time, eight AM to one AM. Any additional discussion? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Then I have a motion to approve the, uh, sorry, yeah, so the motion to approve the entertainment license as submitted?
Second.
All right, motion to approve the entertainment license for Morgan Enterprises LLC, DBA Stoughton House of Brews, as submitted. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you to the applicants. I look forward to, um, to continued business in the downtown and, uh, let us know when you'll be opening, and hopefully we'll all be able to stop by, so. That's great. All right. Next item. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Leo.
Thanks, Leo.
Next item on our agenda is application to erect a pole at Central Street. This is pole seventy-two dash fifty for National Grid, Verizon, New England, Inc. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion to open the public hearing for the, uh, National Grid application, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Do we have the applicant representative from Grid on the line?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Welcome. Just introduce yourself and explain the, um, application for the utility pole.
Certainly. Tim Leiford, National Grid Electric, one hundred East Ashland Street, Brockton. Uh, so National Grid is petitioning to install one jointly-owned pole on Central Street, that's pole seventy-two dash fifty. The proposed pole location is for new equipment that we're planning on installing. The proposed pole location is for new equipment that we're planning on installing that will improve both reliability to the circuit and reduce power outages in the future.
And it will be jointly owned between Grid and Verizon? And can you just describe, I know that some of us have a map here, can you just describe sort of the area and any additional poles that are in the area already and are existing?
Certainly. So we have pole 72 and 73 that will be on either side of this pole. Both of those poles are existing. Pole 72, I believe, is on the west side of the existing driveway. Not sure if it's a driveway or if it's Island Court. Pole 73 is currently located just about on the property line between 1678 Central Street and 1684 Central Street. The proposed pole will be located as close to the east side of Island Court as we can get it. And that's also depending on what is found, whatever the area is dig safe before the installation.
So just so folks at home kind of have a sense of where this is, it's where, it's shortly after where Central Street meets Canton Street past Tosca Drive headed on 27 North, as the African state, as Mr. Leiford stated, Island Court. So there's going to be a pole on both sides of Island Court, as I understand it.
That's correct.
And is there a pedestrian sidewalk at that location at this time?
There is, yes.
And will this be on the sidewalk or on the right way on the road?
Based on where our existing wires are, the pole will be located, I believe, a foot or two off of the curb line on the sidewalk itself.
All right. I will turn it over to members of the board for any additional questions. You all are unmuted, so I'll just go down the line. Ms. Roberts, any questions? Mr. Leiford?
Yes, I have a question. So Mr. Leiford mentioned the, these poles are to improve the reliability in the area. So right now, so it's just new poles? That's, or to improve the lighting in the area? Or is it new wiring? Can you explain that to me? I don't really understand. How will it improve?
So we don't have any plans of installing any new wiring. There's a much larger project that's going on for the entire town. We were able to find other locations on the circuits to install this equipment. Unfortunately, this area that we want to install them on is very busy. It's a very important area that we want to install this equipment on, which is why it's so important for us to get it in this general vicinity. And the only way we were able to do that is by petitioning for the pole location. So we went over a couple of different locations and this was, this was the best location that we were, that we were able to find.
So whenever there are strong winds, Stoughton seems to lose lighting or electricity more frequently than I'd say with Canton. With the positioning of this new pole, would it help to mitigate that issue? Is that the start of mitigating this process?
The idea is it will decrease the number of customers that lose power during those
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cave, any questions for the applicant?
I, no, I think I'm good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Regan?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. McCrisky?
No, just a comment, Tim. Thank you. It's music to my ears to hear that National Grid is doing something to try to limit the outages because in my neighborhood, if a little bird lands on the wires, we lose power. And, you know, I've since, you know, put a generator in my house and out of necessity, didn't have to do it, but it's getting worse. And you can never hear anything back from National Grid that says we're working on it and we're trying to be better. The only time you seem to hear from us is when we're calling screaming and yelling because, you know, there's no answers coming down. So it's nice to hear that National Grid is doing something to change equipment. Now, is this something we can see additional requests coming along or is this a one-shot deal? I know that there's areas where you have additional equipment that supplies it and I know there's trips in areas. Are you folks looking overall at all the areas that have frequent outages in Stoughton? And will we see further meetings like this for you to get, you know, an opportunity for more equipment to limit the risk?
Yes, absolutely. Right now, I don't believe those projects are open yet, but I know we will be looking at those areas in the future. This project that we have going on is sort of a pilot program. So we're gonna, we're gonna see, you know, how the switches that we're gonna be installing work. They have worked in other areas and we feel confident that this will work out, you know, how we want it. And in the future, we will expand it to the other circuits that feed the town as well.
Now, if any member of the board wanted to just touch base about this project, would we reach out to you or who would we reach out to if we just wanted to ask additional questions?
Certainly. You can reach out to me. You can also reach out to your community liaison. I can forward all of that contact information along to whoever needs it after the meeting.
Right, well, I believe you had, and you kept your word following our last meeting that I have, you know, we talked about this, that you did send me some information the next day. And I thank you for that. That was great. And I would ask if there is somebody in addition to the community liaison, because I've had a problem contacting that person in the past. If there's anything that changed from your last email to me, it'd be nice if all the members of the board could get that information so that when we get residents calling us, we may be able to look into it because it may be in a particular board member's neighborhood that there's an outage and it may not be in somebody else's. So if we can just, and with social media, the town manager does an outstanding job with the fire chief and getting that information out, but a lot of people do still call their select board members and ask if they know what's going on. So, thank you very much, Tim.
Understood, yes, no problem.
Madam Chair, I do have one comment, there's a question I'd like to ask if it's okay.
Yes, Mr. Cave.
So this was, I was just looking through the application again and I didn't catch this the first time, but the paperwork that you're actually asking us to sign, the order for joint or identical pole location, is addressed to the city of Situate. But everything else looks like it's correct. It references Stoughton, Massachusetts and other areas. Just to keep us from having any, you know, just have clean paperwork. I think we should probably update that. Would you be able to?
That was, just to clarify, that was paperwork that was sent out from my office?
Yeah, it's in our packet. It's called the Order for Joint or Identical Pole Locations, dated July 1, 2020. And it's the Board of Selectmen, underneath it says of the city of Situate, Mass. So it's probably just a clerical typo.
Yeah, or it's like a form letter, but they had that stuck in there. But the following page includes Stoughton, Massachusetts, and at least two locations. So it's clearly addressing Stoughton, but I just want to make sure that, that when someone looks at this 10 years from now and they're wondering why is this, you know, this is supposed to be in Situate? Why is it signed by the Board of Selectmen in Stoughton? That'll be clear. My right.
Madam Chair, may I suggest, if the gentleman could ask, this was apparently prepared by the applicant. The first line, so folks know what Mr. Cave is referring to, the first line after the heading of the document to the Board of Selectmen of the city of Situate, Massachusetts. And essentially, this is the order that would be signed on behalf of the board. So my suggestion and request is that the, that this form be corrected and if this was done in the applicant's office, that he could have that corrected and sent in for execution. So when it issues from the town, it's issued by the right town. Otherwise, I don't want to see pole 72-50 go up in Situate and nobody there know what we're doing.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Regan. All right. Is there no other comments from members of the board? I will open it up to any public comment. Any members of the public would like to speak, please unmute yourself and I will recognize Hearing none. Entertain a motion on this application from a member of the board. There are no additional questions for the applicant.
Motion to approve. Second.
My computer keeps moving. All right, motion to approve the application to erect the utility pole at Central Street, pole 72-50 for, to be duly owned for National Grid and Verizon. Motion made by Mr. Cave and seconded by Ms. Roberts. Is there any additional discussion on the application? And I believe that is the, is to be including the amendment on the clerical error on the order for joint or identical pole locations. Is that correct, Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Okay, on the motion being seconded, any additional discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Leiford. We'll be in touch with that. If you send over that revised document, we'll be able to get that through for signature and so on.
Certainly.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Next item on our agenda is recommendations from Sergeant O'Connor, who looked into a parking issue related to a citizen complaint. There was both parking issue and littering on intersection of K Way and Willow Street. Detective Sergeant O'Connor on the line?
I am here. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm living the dream, as I like to say.
We all are.
So I got a complaint from a resident of Elizabeth Street regarding mostly parking issues up on K Way at the intersection with Willow Street. It is a dirt area which, that leads into brush and everything. And that vehicles were being parked there from the business across the street at 428 Willow Street, which is a series of six or eight repair shops in there. So I checked it out and it definitely concerned. It causes some visibility issues from people coming down Willow Street and from Elizabeth Street going on to K Way or straight on Willow into Randolph. And to see the traffic coming off of K Way, not to mention, a lot of them were no plates or unregistered or giant trucks that are being worked on and stored there. So it was definitely an issue, not to mention there are some tires and some other things dumped in the area as well. So over the course of, since May, I have issued multiple parking tickets, some civil citations, have towed various vehicles. And this is all after I gave notice to all the individual businesses in that complex that, hey, you can't leave abandoned, cars abandoned out here for more than 72 hours. You cannot have unregistered vehicles. And then, we originally thought that our property was owned by Bousard, but it turns out it's not. It's actually all town-owned property, property. So which gave me a little bit more leeway in my enforcement actions. But because of it, I did make some recommendations that could definitely help this area because some of the businesses up there are more willing to help than some of the others are. In fact, I was up there today and towed a unregistered truck with a chipper trailer attached to it and issued a citation for an unregistered vehicle. And there was, what it is, is most cars parked there are probably of employees that work in those various locations. But they do provide a site hindrance coming up to K Way and it is rarely just an eyesore. So basically, as a result, I felt that there should be some no parking signs up there to give me in the police department a little bit more teeth for enforcement. And that would be on the south side of Willow Street from K Way, approximately 275 feet. So in front of like 412 Willow, along the road, that will deal with any on-street parking issues. Because they're parking off the road the majority of time, I felt that some no trespassing signs would help that scenario because then if they're trespassing, we can remove them as well. And because they're parking so close to the intersection, which parking within 20 feet of the intersection is a violation in of itself. But to make it more visible and more known, I also recommended going on K Way with no parking signs on the west side, about 175 feet. So basically, from the Bousard driveway back to Willow Street. There is a, what do you call it, no dumping sign. It's kind of mixed in the brush and there's only one at one point. And it's kind of a big area. It's probably about 300 feet of area we're talking about. So the installation of maybe one or more to make it a little bit more visible would help. But I also think the biggest thing to help that area would just somehow coordinate off. I don't know what the best possibility is, but, I mean, in other areas, you see boulders, jersey barriers, fencing, a guard rail. I did like the idea of like a wooden rail fence because it provides, one, access to the area for the DPW to maintain it if necessary. Two, it provides the visibility needed for the vehicles driving towards K Way. And where boulders could still provide some site hindrance and maybe jersey barriers as well. But obviously, there's an expense to that. Obviously, like one of the things that could help too is putting curbing in there, but obviously, that's a giant expense as well. So I don't know if that's necessarily the best idea, but it's one of the things to think about. So those are my recommendations. It definitely is a concern. Like I said, I've been up there probably at least once a week checking on it and there's always cars parked there. There's always at least one or two large trucks there. And when there are actual violations there, I deal with them because they've all had notice. And I even had one of the employees from one of the other shops tell me that as soon as I towed four cars out of there a couple of weeks ago, they started parking more cars there just the same. So it is an ongoing issue.
Thank you, Sergeant O'Connor.
You're welcome.
Are there any members of the board who have questions, Sergeant O'Connor, related to those, the issue or the five recommendations outlined and received?
Just one question, really about number five. You mentioned two possible options for preventing vehicles from accessing the property. One is either boulders, jersey barriers, fence. And then also, you have item B, which is, I think, a recommendation for a wood rail, a wooden rail fence. So just the recommendation that you are providing is to put up, your own recommendation is not necessarily boulders and jersey barriers, but a wooden rail fence.
Yes, for, one, for visibility. And two, if a car hits it, it's less liability as well because it's just gonna break and then it can be repaired. Where if you hit a boulder or a jersey barrier, it may cause more. Where if you hit a boulder or a jersey barrier, it may cause more damage to the car that's hitting it and put more liability on the town, which obviously, we don't want to see either.
Is, just along that way, are there only businesses or is it also residential?
So once you get past four-twenty-eight Willow Street, it is all residential.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I ask is, is there, in light of that, do you have any like thoughts about the aesthetics of it? You think a wooden barrier still kind of would?
I think it would make it look better than a bunch of boulders put up there.
Yeah, the jersey barrier.
But boulders, boulders aren't going to be moved either. That's my concern is they could take a wood rail fence apart and, or damage it or something. Boulders, they wouldn't, but obviously, boulders provide more liability and more of a site hindrance.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I, I'm on board with that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions from members of the board? Mr. McCrisky, I see you unmuted yourself.
Not a particular question about this one. It was just nice to see Sergeant O'Connor. I, I know you've had your hands full up there because there, as you are well aware, there's so many areas of town, this, you could work full-time just, you know, going around and trying to straighten these things out. But as I mentioned, the board, I'd like to come up with a policy that, that addresses parking, and I am working on that. I have somebody trying to help me out on getting some samples from other communities. And I would like the, the opportunity, Sergeant, to discuss those with you when I get enough to bring down so we can have a conversation. And I would report back to the board with a sample of what we could use as a policy and some kind of a targeted plan where we could work to, to address some of these areas additionally throughout the town. Thanks very much for all your hard work up there. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd be glad to meet with you as well about the parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan?
I, I, I wonder if between the police department and the office, we could identify which of the businesses that appear to be abusing the streets like this? And when it comes to, if any of them have licenses from the town to do business, I would ask that we start to flag those businesses now. And when the notices for license renewals go out, I would like to have those businesses scheduled for hearings and impose on the, on those licenses, specific restrictions to not abuse the neighborhood and the town in the way it appears that they are abusing because that is one other method the town has to control this kind of behavior. We want to encourage business and we want to encourage good business, but we, we need, sounds like this area needs more regulation and it seems not to like it. So that's a way to hold these businesses accountable. If you could do that and, and line that up for the renewal process in December, which strangely enough, the office will have to get geared up for in early November when the notices go out for that process, I think that would be a help. The other question, I mean, I'm all in favor of one through four. I like item five, but I think we need to have a sense of what the cost would be and where the money would come from to pay for the fence. And so my question to the manager is an estimate for how long it would take to get an estimate for what is contemplated for this and whether it's something that can, that requires bidding and whether there's something within existing town finances to pay for it. Is that something the manager can report back to us on?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I can talk to DPW. We have DPW with his suggestions, possibly engineering as well. And depending on the degree of what we were, would do, some of it would be able to be done in-house, some of it would have to go through a procurement process if, if it's outside. And we'll just look at DPW's budget for, for Roble.
I mean, I would anticipate, given what it takes to install a fence, that the good folks in DPW would be able to put up a fence. Maybe, depending on what else they've got, maybe they don't have the time, but I'd like to scope that out and do it right. And I would be in favor, frankly, of following Jay's recommendation and having the wooden, the wooden structure go up. So I don't know, can you give us a sense of how long it'll take to get that back to us?
It may be a couple of weeks at this point. Just because we've got a warrant, I'm trying to pull together and I'm all over everything about that right now.
No, I, I wasn't trying to press for time. I just wanted to have a sense of what the time was.
It, it may be early September realistically.
That's all right. That's all right. Okay. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I understand that this issue was also brought to the town's attention by a resident in the area, Ms. Spring. I, I see that you're on the line. Didn't know if you had any additional comments you wanted to bring to the board, if you wanted to speak on this issue at all.
Hi, this is Lauren Spring.
Hello. Welcome. Thank you.
I, I just would like to thank the board and specifically Sergeant O'Connor for all of his hard work dealing with this mess that I have to look, look at every day. Every day I come home from work and there are large, either box trucks or big rigs. Lately, it's landscaping trucks, all parked in this area. And it just got to a point, it, nobody parked in this area until probably the past two years, I would say. And it's just become such a huge problem. And that stop sign is such a dangerous stop sign. Every time I come home from work, turning onto Willow Street, I almost get killed at that stop sign. So it's, it's, people are always running. And this parking issue makes it really hard to see and, and it's just very difficult. And my daughter, she's turning eighteen and she's going to be driving. And I just, I don't want to have to worry about her coming home and getting into a car accident in this area. So that's why I finally broke down and I contacted Sergeant O'Connor, and he came down right away. And he, there was a minivan that was in the street practically, and he towed that right away. And he's, he's done a lot of good work there. And I just, anything that could be done to block that off because there, there's just constant parking and it's just a big mess. And it makes the, our small little area, a small, small little neighborhood look like a mess. And they, they dumped trash and my husband actually had to confront the person that dumped, dumped the trash there. And they, they picked it up in front of my husband, but it was a big pile of trash. And it's just very disturbing. I've lived on Elizabeth Street for twenty years and this is just a, a new problem and, well, a fairly recent problem. And anything that the, you know, the town can do, I would greatly appreciate. And I just thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spring. We really appreciate you just bringing this to our attention and we have some excellent recommendations here from Sergeant O'Connor, so hopefully, we can begin to address the problem. And I think you made a good point about folks maybe not reaching out to the town when there's a problem and waiting until it's become pretty severe. So I'd encourage, encourage people that if, if there's an issue that they're noticing, to, to bring it to the board's attention, bring it to the town's attention and we'll hopefully be able to address it and resolve it. So again, we appreciate you doing that and hopefully, we can adopt some recommendations that will, will improve the situation and keep checking on it and maybe change the bad pattern of behavior that's been going on down there and causing a safety concern. So appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Thank you all.
If there are no additional comments, I, the board wants to make any, take any action on these recommendations, we encourage that at this time.
Well, I'll make a motion to, to really just approve all of these recommendations, one through five, five being a wooden rail fence.
I understand that Mr. Regan wanted a scope of work kind of cost estimate on number five before moving forward. I'm not sure if you're agreeable to that, Mr. Cavy?
Sure. So we'll start with one, one through four, and then I guess we'll, we'll approach this again when we, when we get that scope of work.
What's your, is that a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve recommendations one through four.
Second.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Cavy, seconded by Mr. Regan. Beat you through it, Mr. McCrisky. Any additional discussion on the motion?
Yes, I do have a question. How, when we do start working on identifying the process, the cost and the timeline, et cetera, how will citizen or Ms. Spring know what the status is? Will someone communicate that to her or what's the typical process?
So I envision that I would just keep, put this on an agenda in maybe two weeks as Dr. Grimm outlined. That would be approximate timeline for item number five. And then I believe Dr. Grimm will be able to present to us the cost if we have wooden guardrails in an existing contract, if DPW will be able to do the work, et cetera. And so I would just say it will be on a future agenda and we'll discuss it and vote on that recommendation at a future date.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion to approve recommendations one through four. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. And we will, as I mentioned, we'll revisit item number five, I'll be communicating with the town manager, just to put that on the agenda based on, when the information's available. So thank you, Sergeant O'Connor, for the presentation, for these recommendations. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Back to my agenda here. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss temporary activation of outdoor dining. I understand the Director of Economic Development listed on this, town player, John Charbonneau, I believe, has been working on this item and has a presentation for the board. So I'll turn it over to Pam and John for an update.
Great. Thank you. Before I get into the presentation, I just wanted to give the board a quick update. As of the end of the day today, we have six-hundred-and-seventy-five return surveys for the Shmood rezoning project. So the numbers coming in are really outstanding and we still have nine days to go. So I want to thank everybody who has taken the time to fill out the survey, everyone who's spread the word, everyone who's helped get the word out there. And I don't know if she's still on, but Cynthia, I got your survey today and she mailed it in to me and I submitted it on her behalf. So she has been, her answers have been included in the survey. So thank you to everybody. We still have nine days left, so anyone who hasn't completed the survey, please do. And the, the response has been outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau.
You're welcome.
So John, were you actually going to present first because I thought I was?
Yes. No, I'll, if, if you want to go ahead, Pam, I can do my presentation after you're done.
Okay. I think because mine kind of leads into yours, so I think that was the idea. But, but basically, my presentation about outdoor dining is, a lot of it is based on activating the train depot space. Originally, when I had put this together, I was going to present it last week, but I got bumped because of the power issues. We thought of something that could take place now with COVID precautions, but due to concerns from the Board of Health, we actually determined that it would make more sense to activate this when the COVID threat has died down. But I'm still going to go forward with the presentation about the depot space because I want us to be ready to take advantage of being able to do something there as soon as it's possible. Might not be till the spring, but I actually have a plan on how I can move forward with that. So the proposal is to activate the train depot exterior space on a temporary basis in order to allow for outdoor dining with alcohol consumption. This would be something that would be like one to two days a week, weather permitting, so probably like late spring to early fall. The goal is to activate the downtown as other communities have done. You'll drive through places like Norwood and Dedham and you'll see picnic tables set up on the, on the town commons, streets blocked off to, for just pedestrians, and you'll see just common dining areas that different restaurants in the area can use. Obviously, we don't have the wide sidewalks downtown. We don't have a town common right now. So the depot space actually is an area that would allow us to do this. So how, how can we achieve this goal? So to activate the depot property in the near future, we would need an establishment that doesn't need to use the interior of the building because the interior still needs work to be done. It doesn't have, you know, functioning bathrooms and things like that. An outdoor beer garden with dining would actually be the solution in order to achieve this goal. Why, why a beer garden? Because they can operate without using the indoor space. And also, when I did the restaurant study a couple of years ago, this was one of the types of businesses, people wanted to see a brewery type of business in the downtown and they also liked the idea of outdoor dining. Breweries do exist in many communities in the area. They're doing very well. They're popular among different age groups. I mean, you go into a brewery, you see people there with babies, you see people there with their dogs. It's, it's not like a regular bar. It's more of a community place to gather. So which, which brewery could we work with? Well, right now, I know that Percival Brewery would be interested in operating a beer garden in that area. They're actually, one of the businesses that responded to the requests for interest that we put out for the depot back in the fall. They have been reaching out to me over the last two and a half years, well before we even owned the train depot. They're interested in going into the interior of the space, but I actually reached out to them and asked them if they'd be interested in doing something on a temporary basis in the exterior, just to get something going. They actually have two of their employees that live in Stoughton, so that's how the connection came about with Stoughton. They proposed a beer taproom with locally brewed craft beer and a craft coffee kiosk with takeaway and onsite premise consumption and that have a rotating art gallery that would showcase local artists. So this is if they have gotten the interior. They know they'd have to go through the RFP process, but in the meantime, they could activate the outside space. They're actually already operating outdoor dining with food trucks at their location in the Norwood Space Center. They have a relationship already with a lot of food trucks, but they're also willing to utilize local businesses to help out the existing businesses in Stoughton, places like Morel's Barbecue or Diggs Diner that have food trucks. And also, they'd be willing to get prepackaged foods from some of the existing businesses like Stoughton Diner, maybe the, the Polish deli that's over at Trackside and some of the other businesses in the area. So I have this whole elaborate plan of how we can make this happen now, so we won't go into most of the details because a lot of it's based on how they could operate during the COVID crisis. But they knew that if they used the outside area, the overhang on the side and the rear of the train depot, they could probably fit about picnic tables in that area and they would be willing to supply like the kegerator, they'd do beautification with planters, they'd provide the picnic tables and things. So they were willing to make an investment to make this happen. Let's see. I actually reached out to a lot of the other departments just to see if we could make this work with the blessing of the, the town manager and the Director of Development Services. They, they were on board with me exploring this. So I talked to the procurement officer and Fran's opinion was this would fall under a license agreement, which would be exempt from procurement and the town be able to require a weekly fee. She reached out to town council and Jonathan Eichman confirmed that we'd be able to do this on a, on a temporary license, which is exempt from procurement, to host this type of temporary event. And the brewery would just need to get a vote from the select board. Jack Erickson, the building commissioner, was okay with this as long as we weren't using the inside of the building right now. You know, we'd, we'd have to have the porta potties and the wash- You know, we'd, we'd have to have the porta potties and the washing station. Paul Giffen said that he would be able to work with them so that it wouldn't interfere with any of the rehab work that's going on at the train depot or that might in the future. And then Sean Leahy, the assistant town sanitarian, said he, he thought that it could work with the food trucks getting the proper permits. And Larry Perry, the town sanitarian, he did have a lot of concerns, and they were mostly based on COVID. And so that's why we're recommending that this not happen until the COVID threat has passed. But still, you know, he thought that we could also make it work once things are better. So basically, what I'm asking you to consider, and, you know, I don't need an answer right now, but at the proper time, I'd like to be ready to move forward with activating this space in this way. So I really just wanted to know if you had some support for me pursuing this. Because I want our downtown to be, to be active, to be a gathering space, to be a dining destination like, like we have in some other communities. I don't want our residents to have to go somewhere else to have this type of experience. I think that, you know, to the fact that we own the property, we're able to activate a beer garden type of establishment with food trucks right in our own downtown. So this is something I'd like to pursue if you decide that it's appropriate for probably the spring and next summer. And this brewery, Percival, said they'd actually be willing to do that next summer. And maybe we'd make it open to other local businesses to operate in that area, or other breweries that might be interested. But right now, they happen to be willing to do this and make an investment. So in the meantime, I actually had said that I thought that we should try to activate some other public spaces in the downtown, just so that we'd have a sitting area, so that the, the businesses that are already there could actually have people go and have an outdoor space to eat in. So I actually recommended that we look into making the public packing lot at the corner of Washington Street and Wyman Street into a public seating area with some picnic tables. I reached out to, with the help of Sarah Blackett, or she's helped me with this, some of the local restaurants downtown, and Nagoya Sushi, and the Organic Lunchbox, which is going to be taking over the Stoughton Diner location. They were both in favor of it. And I know last year, the Friends of Stoughton Center were able to purchase some gestron tables, little metal tables with two chairs we had in a few locations downtown. And some of them we put under the theater marquee area because it was not interfering with the sidewalk. And Avocado's customers actually sat out there and utilized it. So maybe their customers would also like to take advantage of this. And in downtown Norwood, one of the most active places is Daddy's Dairy, now has a second location in downtown Norwood. And they actually said that they'd be willing to come up to this spot if we activated it next year. They wouldn't be able to do it this year because they're, they're not staffed for it, but they'd actually be willing to bring a truck or something down there. So I, I think that there's interest in it, and it's something that we could do fairly easily. And John actually was able to find the time to get more in-depth into this project. And I think he wanted to give you a presentation now just to explain how we could actually activate that space.
Okay.
I'm also, thanks.
So I'm going to try and pull up PowerPoint right now. Just bear with me a sec, see if I can get this going. Where are we? Can everyone see my screen?
Yep, there you go.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so everyone can see that first slide, title slide? Can everyone see that first slide?
Yes.
Okay. So as Pam said, looking into trying to create downtown outdoor dining area opportunities. The purpose is to provide a safe outdoor dining area to be utilized by multiple downtown restaurants during the COVID-19 restrictions to allow these restaurants that are smaller in size, don't have a lot of indoor seating. So with the limited capacity, this would make them, give them more options to create opportunities in revenue. Of course, there would have to be some assurances that if we did activate an area, as referenced by Pam, the restaurants would conduct cleanup of the tables and ground in the site to comply with COVID-19 health requirements. That would be extremely important to make sure that it remains clean and tidy because it, because it is a municipal area. So the area needs to be designed also safely for the patron, patrons, restaurant employees, and motorists alike, so everyone can enjoy it and it's safe for everybody. So what we would be asking the select board to do is vote to amend the recently adopted temporary outdoor dining regulations to allow for such an area on municipal property. Because when this was approved back in June, it was approved not for municipal areas, but private properties only. So the current temporary regulations would not allow for the location of outdoor dining on municipal properties. The changes would be as follows on the, on the following slides that I'm about to show. And also, I'll be presenting the select board with a couple of different options that have been discussed among town staff as far as the preferred layout. And I also got comments back from police, fire, and the Board of Health regarding these potential layouts. So this is the purpose and scope. This is the first area that would need to be amended. And you could see the amended language highlighted. This would be added to the existing regulations to allow this type of development on municipal property as well as private property. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty easy amendment right there. The other area would be under Section Three and would state that the town may provide tables, barriers, trash receptacles, and other necessary items for areas established on municipally, municipally, new municipally owned properties, excuse me. So this is the location that was, that Pam was referencing before. It's right along Freeman Street, right near the church, right near the Malcolm Parsons Building. So one potential layout that was discussed initially would be to utilize the bank of parking spaces along Freeman Street. Because although it doesn't show on the overhead, I think you saw it on the, on the, the ground view. At the bottom left-hand corner, near that hatched, blocked off parking space, there is a handicap parking space. Under this scenario, that handicap parking space would not be disturbed. It would be allowed to stay there. And it would allow the row of spaces abutting the church property to remain intact and unlobbered. So the purpose of this design would be to maintain, again, ample parking for the existing business, also to provide safe internal circulation for motor vehicles, lastly, to maintain the handicap parking space shown in slide number three. It would also, although it's not shown on this scenario, would allow space for a possible food truck on the property. What you see now is the second design that was proposed by staff and discussed by staff. Would allow additional tables because it would be a larger space. It would basically block off the handful of spaces to the west of the lot along Washington Street. It would require the relocation of the handicap space temporarily. This would not be permanent. So as you can see, the temporary handicap space could be moved closer to the building. And this, this scenario does show a food truck in the parking lot. And again, as with the other scenario, you could also potentially locate a food truck along Washington Street as well. Of course, this would have to be done safely, and obviously, any queuing, any line to the food trucks would need to be done to not interfere with the table service because of the social distancing requirement. So that would be something that would have to be looked at closely if this were to happen. And the purpose of this design would be to maintain ample parking for the existing business. It would also be to provide safe internal circulation for motor vehicles. And this design would eliminate the handicap parking space shown in slide three, but a temporary space, it could be created. Again, the police department would be involved in the approval process for that. It would also allow space for a potential food truck within the parking lot and also one on Washington Street. So the way that we intend to fund this project is Mass DOT has recently made available a grant program called the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. We would submit a grant proposal through that program to fund the purchase of tables, trash receptacles, and barriers at a minimum to be able to provide this area. Initially, in speaking with Paul Giffen and also Matt, the Parks and Rec Director, between those two facilities, we do have plenty of room to store whatever materials, whatever items the town chooses to purchase for this purpose. And the idea would be it wouldn't just be for this year. I realize we're coming to mid-August where it's getting a little bit late in the season. However, we don't know what the spring will bring as far as easing of restrictions. We're not sure yet. So even if the restrictions are lifted and this area isn't used for this next year, the idea is that the town could utilize the, the barriers, the tables, and the trash receptacles that are purchased for other purposes in other ways. So the program is looking for projects specifically that can be implemented within 15 to 30 days upon being awarded. Contacted the Mass DOT staff, and applications are reviewed continuously on a rolling basis. And decisions are made within 14 business days. Therefore, therefore, the full cycle from application submission to payment is approximately three to four weeks. Applications will be accepted until September 29th, and they begin at $5,000. As Pam stated, they will be continuing to contact downtown restaurants to gauge level of interest. And Pam has also said that they would contact the church to inquire about potential use of their lawn as well. I know she's, she expressed to me that they've, they've been willing to work with the town in the past and different organizations for use of their lawn. So that's another possibility to expand this area. I'm working with the DPW Parks and Recreation Department right now to determine the project cost of tables, trash receptacles, and barriers. We're starting to get some numbers together. However, the total cost will depend on which design the select board prefers, and if the town intends to place a tent on the site. So these are things that will affect cost, obviously, whether we're doing four tables, six tables, eight tables. The preferred design also will impact how, how many barriers we would have to purchase. The addition of outdoor dining will not require Board of, Board of Health approval, but any food truck that would look to utilize this area would require an application to the Board of Health. So as you can see, the police department's initial comments is that they like the, the first design better. It allows more tables and no vehicles. Of course, this is the second design as shown in the slideshow. It allows more tables and no vehicles backing towards other people or tables. They asked if we thought about asking the church and the center, and like I said, Pam has expressed that she would reach out to the church. They also suggest putting in additional barriers that vehicles don't turn off a Stoughton Center into that parking area by going over the sidewalk at the crosswalk, which they see frequently. So again, these are other considerations, once we really sit down with the different departments, that will influence what the town would need to seek in terms of grant funding. Fire department had this comment. Is this for downtown restaurants or food trucks? Yes, it's for downtown restaurants mainly, but could also be for, for a food truck or two. They like the rendering, rendering of the tables adjacent to Washington Street as well. What are the chances that the town rents a tent long-term so the tables will be covered? Again, that's something that, that could be considered. Finally, Larry from the Board of Health does not see any Board of Health issues, as the tables appear to be adequately spaced. Right now, they only have one licensed food truck and two ice cream trucks. So obviously, any additional food truck other than those would have to be licensed by them. And also, keeping in mind that most food trucks have generators with exhaust or need to keep their engines idling to power refrigerators and water heaters and water pumps. So the, the alignment and the spacing of the food trucks relative to the tables will be important. That would have to be examined to make sure that, again, the outdoor dining experience is what, the outdoor dining experience is what is the priority here. And food trucks would have to work around that. So right now, what town staff is looking for is guidance from the select board regarding interest in amending the temporary outdoor dining policy, and also in pursuing such a project, as well as the preferred design of the select board. So at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to the select board and see what questions or comments you have on these proposals.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Pam. I'll just go right down the list. Ms. Roberts, any questions or comments for Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes, my question is regarding traffic flow. Has any consideration been discussed how to improve the flow of traffic? Because right now, you know, there are bottlenecks outside of, you know, rush hour traffic. And I like the idea of having the food trucks and the food and the interest in downtown that is, that is so really good and so special. But it's the traffic flow. We, we always talk about limited parking. We have MB, MBTA parking lots, but it's the traffic flow and bottlenecks that may impact the, the pleasantry of going to, you know, outdoor restaurants, outdoor dining.
Well, that's, that's an excellent question, because one conversation that would have to happen with the police department, especially if we were to decide to pursue this, this project, would be traffic safety and also pedestrian safety. And, and obviously, if a restaurant located across Washington Street, for example, would look to utilize this, it would require people picking up their food from that restaurant and crossing, using the crosswalk, crossing the street to access this area. So that would definitely be a conversation that would have to be held. I know that here in Wensaco, Rhode Island, when these restrictions began and easing a little bit, and restaurants were able to open up outdoor dining, there were instances where police details were utilized where there was hazardous situations. Of course, these were situations where waiters and waitresses were actually crossing the street to serve outdoor customers. In this case, I don't believe that's what the purpose would be. I believe it would be for people to be able to pick up their food and go across the street to eat it rather than bringing it home or sitting in their car. So that would be a conversation that would have to, have to be held regarding how to make sure that traffic flow can, can be as safe as possible, not just for cars, but for pedestrians as well.
I actually wanted to comment on that, too. This is Pam. Also, as you know, with COVID, the traffic is not quite as, as, as dense as usual. So the idea, I think, is if we were able to do something this season in that location, it would actually be visible to people, and it would help out the existing restaurants. But everything that we would purchase through the grant is movable. So this could actually, the, the picnic tables, if we got umbrellas, things like that, could be moved to the depot location later, or maybe to the rec department location next year. So it might be that, you know, it's appropriate for this area at this time when the congestion is less due to COVID. And then we will move the entire thing to another town on the property in, in the next year if we want to go.
I guess, Ms. Roberts, any additional questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Keep working our way down here. Mr. Regan, I see you're unmuted. Do you have any questions or comments?
I, I do. Thank you. I like the ideas. I want to thank you both for the work, obviously, that you've done and the other departments to contribute this. the work, obviously, that you've done and the other departments to contribute this presentation. I would encourage the grant application to go in. I don't know if you need any activation by the board to do that. I'd suggest including the tent in what you're looking for. And I also would ask you to consider whether there are some power that you would want to bring in to the sites so that food service that might be there would have some options, including powering up connections for food trucks and not just leave them on their own. And, you know, these places where I've seen, they've got some nice evening lighting. I don't know what you call the I don't want to call them circus lights, but small lights under the awnings. It makes the place look actually happy and attractive and where you want to be. This might be a silver lining in the dark cloud of COVID that we're going to learn how to activate the downtown. From this activation, move into making it work better. Part of the vision we've had for the downtown has been open space to oversell that idea. If we had that now, we could be using it now as a way that you're asking us to use parking areas, and it would be a good thing for the town. So I think this is great, and we shouldn't be shy about trying to make it work.
Two things I'll add to Mr. Oregan's list, I guess, are artificial turf. I've seen that in Norwood. And if there's heat lamps or those types of lamps, just two other on my list because I also thought about the tent and lights. So Mr. McCrisky, any questions, comments for staff?
Yeah, great job. Anybody who's familiar with South Boston on D Street, there's an outdoor dining area there that consists of little shacks and food trucks. And, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. When I hear somebody talking, I've got mixed feelings when we talk about traffic flow. I'm all for downtown safety when it comes to traffic and make sure everything is safe. But I'll tell you, it doesn't bother me the least how long it takes somebody to get through Stoughton Center. And I think that unfortunately, we talk sometimes too much about moving traffic through Stoughton Center. And the more we worry about that, you know, the more we make it difficult to do business in downtown center. So if it takes somebody a little longer and they go around and find another way home, if they're going from Canton to Easton and it slows down in Stoughton because we're doing something that's great for our downtown, you know, my hat's off to you folks. And what I would like to see is more or less what works. So you're going to be the ones doing this. I would be more than glad to support whatever you come back that you think is the best thing. I know we're kind of just on the, you know, the threshold right now. But it's great. I mean, I do agree there's some local people that are bringing up Deeks. You know, his food truck is new to him. And there's a lot more of that. And I think that it does allow us to utilize other pieces of property as well that makes it convenient to people that are in town. So, no, great presentation, great idea. Everything sounds good. I mean, we can, you know, just have a laundry list, but I know you'll whittle this down and you'll have to come back, but I would be in favor of amending the policy as it stands now so that you folks can move on. And maybe it's just something with you working with the chair and suggesting the wording that works best for you so that we can give you the tools to get the job done and not just go with something unless you're ready to present that tonight.
Joe, I just, I think the two word changes that were presented in the presentation, I think that's all we need to amend at this point. Just to keep it very general because, you know, that's why I tried to keep the language very general to give us the flexibility where, you know, the type of items listed in the policy, you know, I could easily tweak to say such as, you know, so we don't want to pin ourselves down to only certain items because again, as Mr. Oregan and Ms. Howe mentioned, there's, you know, we come up with other items that we may want to add into this grant such as potential artificial turf, you know, or a tent or things like that. So I think we want to keep it general enough to give us some flexibility to take this on a case-by-case basis.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavy?
Yeah, I agree with, this is great. I think you're really heading down the right path. I appreciate all the hard work. From the presentation I saw, the only concern I had was that I also agree that from the slides, the second of the two I liked a lot. Having extra seating was, I think, is going to be important for this. But I am also very concerned about the loss of that handicap spot and though it gets relocated. It gets relocated farther away from the actual sidewalk, which is where people are going to be going to. And so there might be some issues with having to go around everything. I don't, you know, I'm down there all the time, but I can't really form a picture in my mind of exactly how you get through to that. And
Well, Steve, can I answer that quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you notice on the slide that I showed of the rendering, there is another sidewalk that runs perpendicular to Washington Street. If you're facing the salon and you're walking into the parking lot from Washington Street, there is a sidewalk that runs along the edge of that parking lot to your right. So if we relocated the handicap spot close to the building, someone could utilize that sidewalk to come down to Washington Street. And I did notice that as these renderings were being put together, just so you know. So there is a sidewalk that comes down to Washington Street that a person using that space could utilize.
The, and I saw that as well in the picture, and I've been down that way a number of times. And one of the things that stuck with me, I park there often because a lot of people don't even realize it's a municipal lot. It's sort of but what I've noticed is that there are a lot of people who will back up pickup trucks there. And I can't even get through it, and I've got no disabilities. So I've got to go around. And it doesn't bother me, but if I was trying to get, you know, through with either a wheelchair, that would not be possible. And even somebody who was working using with, you know, some sort of additional supports, a walker or something like that, it wouldn't be possible. So that sidewalk becomes obstructed kind of easily. I'm not necessarily against it, but we do have like a disabilities commission. It might be nice to run this past them, get their input on and help kind of thinking through that problem because we do want to maximize the use of the space. But, you know, we also have to, I'm going to be perfectly frank. I've got to be very mindful of my own blind spots, and I don't know what types of obstacles someone might face trying to get from the new spot to a sidewalk safely.
Now, the other option may be, if this is a possibility to include in the grant, are there wheel stops right now at the back of those parking spaces that butt that sidewalk, Steve, over on the church side?
I don't believe so. I think it goes right to the sidewalk.
So would that be, would that help if we potentially purchased wheel stops for the back of those parking spaces? So it would help prevent vehicles from encroaching on that sidewalk? Because you're right, that's a problem wherever there's parking up against the sidewalk or a landscaped area.
Yeah, I mean, just whatever we have to do to make sure that people with disabilities can access public walkways, you know, is what we should be doing.
We'll talk to the Disabilities Commission, and maybe that's something that would help. Regardless of whether or not this happens or we do this, that would probably be a good idea anyway for that parking lot.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Other than that, that's my main concern is I would really like to be able to to realize that vision from the second slide. But if, you know, if we're not able to, because it just, there's no way around these constraints, you know, we have an option two, which was actually, I guess, from your slide, option one. And we can still do something rather than nothing. But yeah, I'd be mindful of folks who who have those kinds of obstacles. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for everything. This was really excellent.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I don't have any additional comments. I think this is a great idea. I mean, I haven't really been going out too much, but I made it to the downtown of Norwood. And as Ms. McCarthy mentioned, they have a few restaurants down there and picnic tables all on their common. And then they had a street closed off with a bunch of outdoor seating that folks were able to just bring their food out to. So if we could offer the same for the restaurants downtown, I think people would really utilize it. So I appreciate you both bringing this to us. In terms of the changes, I think those small language changes, like you said, John, would hopefully make it possible. And then I'm, you know, willing to authorize or, you know, be in favor of authorizing staff to move forward with the application as soon as possible. And maybe we could work out the design at a later date, but I think moving on that grant application just in order to try to get this activated as soon as possible would be
Right.
best approach. And then, you know, we can figure out design. And if there's plenty of storage space for tables, chairs, tents, you name it, I think we just go for what we think we can get from the state award. So
Right. And that's a good point because in talking to Matt with Parks and Recreation, they certainly wouldn't mind having a few tables to put over on their property. And, you know, in Pam's initial presentation about the depot, again, these tables could be utilized elsewhere if not here next year or in the future. So it's something that would definitely would not hurt the town to have these things. And certainly, I know that, you know, the police department had to rent some barriers for some of the demonstrations that went on at the beginning of this period back in the spring with the restrictions. So it certainly would benefit the town to have some of these mobile barriers in case they need them for other things.
And this is Pam. I was also going to say, I think the Friends of Stoughton Center's beautification committee would really like to get on board with putting some planters in that area, too, and making it really look attractive. I think that's something that they've always been interested in doing in the downtown. So I can also ask them about that. And sometimes the barriers actually are the type that have planters kind of incorporated into them. So that's something we can ask about to make it look really nice. I had one other question before we're done with this. So does the Select Board think that I should try to pursue being ready to activate the depot area when COVID dies down, hopefully in the spring? With the beer garden idea? Or do you want me to come back in the, you know, late winter to introduce it again? Or do you just think it's a bad idea? I'd just like to know whether you want me to pursue it at all.
Can we think about it over a beer? And for one, I would encourage that we understand we have, what, thirty parking spaces?
Yeah, thirty.
The depot building? I don't think we should we should shortchange ourselves on the opportunities that that area, you know, presents. That's a that's a challenged space. I think that, for example, there's a social club near the depot inside. Maybe there's something we can do to assist some of the clubs to have outdoor activities that they may not now be able to do. And so I think it'd be good for us to look at those parking spaces as additional space to have that area be lively. A couple of parking picnic benches under a railroad awning at nine-thirty at night where that is without anything else going on is really not going to be an attractive place to go as somebody who has taken commuter rail and got home from work at that hour many times.
Right.
We can do it. But we should, we should not sell ourselves short of the opportunity we have with the resources in the downtown. And I, for one, would encourage you to look at any available space to make reasonably available and accessible for these kinds of uses, not to take away available parking, but
Right.
in the evening or on a weekend night, and it's not, we're not using it for anything else. You know, go ahead. Maybe we get into talks with the MBTA about the parking area for these other uses to activate. I'd be in favor tonight, and I'll make a motion if the chair would take it to authorize the amendments to the outdoor dining policy so that there's nothing holding you up to move ahead.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion to authorize those amendments as presented by staff to the outdoor dining regulations, any additional discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
I'm sorry, for a moment, I got kicked out of the meeting, so I came back in. I don't know if I missed anything on the conversation. But each, and I did hear Mr. Oregan on one of the Portuguese clubs. But the St. John's Club down on 138 has been, you know, having food to go. And if we included them or the PNC and the Camoja in that area by allowing them to put outdoor seating and go, you know, that's just one more because they're trying to do takeout when they could probably bring people in there. So if we relax the regulations and make it all-inclusive, then you'd have those three clubs as well. And that's another way of bringing people into downtown because they are doing it now. And you never know what this could bring into something even bigger and better as we go down the road.
I agree with you. I also think that the outdoor dining policy that we have now includes if they, if those clubs wanted to do that. I understand we already allow that option delegated to the town manager upon application. So your sentiments couldn't be more in line with, I think, what everybody thinks. And if I'm looking at the language, you think there's something additional we could do? I'm in favor, but I think we have it covered if they want to do it.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. So it sounds like before we move on.
John, we have a motion on the table.
I'm sorry.
Discussion on, thank you. Any additional comments or discussion on the motion for members of the board?
No.
On the motion to authorize the amendments to the outdoor dining regulations. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now, John, do you need a motion on the grant application from this board or is that?
Yeah, it couldn't hurt. I mean, even if I don't need it, it, you know, it wouldn't hurt for the board to give that authorization to pursue the grant.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Oregan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion to authorize the town to pursue the shared spaces grant through Mastot from our staff, rather. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes. So Pam, I know you wanted some feedback on whether we thought activating the outdoor space on the depot, our thoughts on that. I agree with Mr. Oregan. I think as soon as we can activate the, even just the exterior space and keep those options open, I think that's great. So if you want to relay that and maybe we can work with the Board of Health to figure out exactly what that would look like either in the time of COVID or next spring, I think we'd be receptive to that. So just keep it on the radar in my future agendas, running documents. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Okay.
Any additional discussion on this agenda item?
Christine, just one last thing. It seems as though the Select Board leans towards supporting the Design Number Two with the space parallel to Washington Street. So I will communicate with the Disabilities Commission on the safety issues and the relocation of the handicap spot that we've brought up. And it sounds as though if we can make that work safely, that's the preference of the Select Board. Is that correct?
I mean, we can, I can call the members now. Like, you know, I always defer to the recommendations of both the staff, the fire, and police departments, but we do probably need that that recommendation from the Disabilities Commission, as Mr. Cavy noted. So
Yeah.
I just lean toward getting the most out of this grant that we can and then having the design that makes the most sense and is the most accessible fit after. So if they were on a two- or three-week timeline based on the grant application, we can put this on a future agenda to approve the file. We need our approval on that.
Great.
One of the things that Option Two does for me is because it's right along the road, it makes it more visible. And so a longer-term approach to making the downtown a likable place to be, it makes it, it's ongoing, everyday advertising, hey, I'd like to be here.
Right.
And I'd like to leverage the dark cloud we've got on COVID to the extent we can for when the cloud clears and it's a sunny day in the square, actually have a place for people to go.
Yeah, so I think Steve brought up a great point on the sidewalk and the handicap space. So if we can space. So if we can, if we can find a way to make that work, I know the Police Department had a comment on design number one that I didn't realize with cars backing out or pulling out towards the tables and the barriers possibly creates an unsafe situation. So if we can, if we can mitigate the other situation that Mr. Kavy brought up, maybe, and we also get, we also get more tables and we can get the most out of the area. So we'll see if we can make that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Pam.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good night.
All right. That concludes our last open session item. We do have an executive session. Item A is to consider the purchase exchange lease of valuable property pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 2186 for 31 Porter Street and 45 Lyman Street. Item B, discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 32 for the town manager. And item C, to approve executive session minutes of July 21st and July 28th, 2020. Make a finding that is against the town's interest in future negotiations or litigation to discuss these matters in open session, and therefore they should be discussed in executive session. There are motions to enter into executive session for the reasons as stated.
So, second?
Motion made by Mr. Oregan, seconded by Ms. Roberts. On the motion to enter executive session, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky? Is he here? I must have lost Joe. I vote yes, so I'm not sure Mr. McCrisky went. I know he usually accuses himself from item B, so perhaps he dropped off again. But the board will let motion pass this four to zero to enter into executive session. The board will adjourn from executive session. So this will conclude our open session. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August 18th. Thank you all for your participation tonight, and we'll see you next Tuesday.